I'm going to give you some.
It's not too weird. I'm going to go to the other two.
So sorry.
It's not too weird. It's not too weird.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the work session for our December Board of Education meeting. Calling the meeting to order at seven o'clock P.M. Would you all please join me in a moment of silence? And as we do our moment of silence, I ask of you to still keep the Turner family in your thoughts, please. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. No special recognitions, no public participation. Okay. All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Second.
Okay. Moved in second, all in favor. Approval of the minutes.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
In the financial report, the special purpose local option for education sales tax for distribution for October was $1,191,181, which is a decrease of $24,332 from the previous month. The average collections for the first 56 months of East Plaush four were $1,2,374. The title add velorum tax collection for October was $500,684. Expenditures are within budget at forty point twenty-four percent of funds expended and forty-one point six-seven percent of the year complete. And finally, Georgia law requires that we publish a schedule of East Plaush expenditures by December 31. The schedule would be published in the December 22, 2019 edition of the Covington News. And that document, along with board financials for November, is there for your review. And that concludes the financial report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Barr. Are there any questions on the financial report? Okay. B, strategic plan report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent's report, beginning with the area of student achievement and success. Select elementary and secondary teachers attended a professional learning session led by author Daniel Venables to further discuss his book, How Teachers Can Turn Data Into Action, and to walk through the steps of analyzing data to change instruction and improve student achievement and results. Under high-quality workforce, in order to improve the retention rate of teachers in NCSS, human resources department personnel reviewed upbeat survey results for the district and all schools. The participation rate was eighty-one percent with 1,072 teachers completing the survey. The district's average engagement score increased by three points from the average engagement score over 2000, I'm sorry, October 2018. Under culture, climate, and communication, a number of school counselors attended the Georgia School Counselors Association Conference in Augusta. Two NCS, NCSS counselors presented. Ms. Granetta Turner shared the externship experience, and Dr. Jacqueline Pennington shared caring for kids. And finally, in the area of organizational and operational effectiveness, in November, the NCSS illness response team worked in conjunction with the Newton County Health Department to monitor and decrease the prevalence of flu and flulike illnesses seen in several schools. And that is the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Roundtree? Mr. Roundtree, I have a question.
Uh-huh. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Under high-quality workforce, item number four, with the upbeat survey and the eighty-one percent. Um, you guys have the breakdown of the participation by each school?
Uh, yes, ma'am. That's on the each-school individuals, individual reports.
Okay. Is it possible that I can review that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Fennell, would you get? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Enrollment report?
The enrollment report, as of December 5, 2019, enrollment this, um, is 19,418. Um, the enrollment this time last year was 19,825, which is a decrease of 407 students at the current time.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on the enrollment report? Okay. All right. Mr. Roundtree, graduation update?
Okay. I have a handout, two, three, four, five, that I'm going to give to each of you. And this is a fact sheet regarding graduation 2020. I have listed here on the first page, time and place for each of the high schools. You will note that Eastside High School will graduate at 7:00 P.M. on May 22, 2020 at Springfield Christian Ministries in Conyers, Georgia. Newton High School will graduate at 9:00 A.M. May 23, 2020. And the exercises will be held at New Birth Missionary Baptist Church in Lithonia, Georgia. Then Al Covey High School, 3:00 P.M., May 23, 2020, back at Springfield Christian Ministries in Conyers, Georgia. Under each school, I have listed the tentative number of graduates. And obviously, this being the first semester, they, they have a, a count. But of course, those numbers, you know, can change by the time the actual exercises get here. And then I have the seating capacity of each venue. If, if you'll notice there, Eastside will, right now, has a tentative number of 300 graduates. And the seating capacity at Springfield Christian Ministries is 3,000. Newton County, Newton High School has a tentative number of graduates of 612, and the seating capacity at its venue is 6,000. And then Al Covey has a tentative number of graduates, 424. And again, the seating capacity at Springfield is 3,000. If you'll look on the back, I have a rationale for the use of New Birth Missionary Baptist Church for Newton High School because it's different from the other two schools. And utilizing, just in a nutshell, New Birth Baptist Church to hold the ceremony for Newton High School allows for more equitable distribution of family tickets across the three high schools. So due to the size of the graduating class at Newton High School, a larger venue is needed to ensure this equity. And as we have done in years past, transportation to and from both venues for graduates will be offered to each school. And then other venues considered, you will see down, we have the, we looked at, in addition to those two facilities, we looked at the Georgia International Convention Center, the Infinite Energy Center, and then UGA is Segmond Coliseum. And so you see the seating capacity, but you will also notice that the cost for each of those, but you will also see that neither of those other venues were available.
Mr. Roundtree, may I ask a favor, please?
Uh-huh.
So for those that will view this meeting online, if you would call out those cost amount because they're not going to know those cost amount.
Okay.
And I want to be very transparent with the public.
Okay. For Springfield Baptist Church, for each of the, for, let me, Mr. Roundtree, you want me to call them for all of them or just the two that we selected?
Yes. Because they need to see that we, that you also did it fiscally.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Fiscally responsible.
Um, for Springfield Baptist Church, the seating capacity is 3,000. The rental fee is $6,750 per school. So the total cost would be $13,500. There are other fees associated with the use of Springfield that's not directly tied to Springfield, but we provide security officers to help with traffic control and things of that nature. And the cost last year ran about $2,000 per school. New Birth Missionary Baptist Church, the seating capacity is 6,000. They're charging us $11,000 per school, but that's only one school there. The only other cost would be for video streaming. That, at the time of my meeting with them, they had not secured the contract. They were getting a new vendor for that, and they had not procured the contract as of yet. There are no security charges separate from that because the security charges for, for New Birth, they're built into that fee. For Georgia International Convention Center, the seating capacity is 5,000. The rental fee is $41,000 per day. There is an additional cost of $20,000 for stage and sound. And we must also employ EMTs and police. And there, there is a four-hour minimum that we must secure them for. And then again, I just want to point out that, that facility is not available. Infinite Energy, the seating capacity is 13,000. The rental fee is $30,000 per school. And then there is an additional fee for sound reduction. And again, the, their, the facility is not available. At UGA, Segmond Coliseum has a seating capacity of $10,500. They did not even provide us with the cost. They just sent us a, you know, kind of a tersely written email saying that we could not use their facility and did not provide us with any additional information.
Okay. And one last thing, too. It may be the last thing. Let me review this because, again, those people that are watching it do not see this. Um, the per, per people costs, I like that breakdown as well.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am. That is based on the cost of, you know, of each facility. And that cost, the total cost is divided by the number of graduates.
Right. Would you call out that number?
Okay. I'm sorry. Al Covey High School, the per people cost is $15.91. Eastside High School, a per people cost $22.50. Newton High School, $17.97. And that includes security. So they're, you know, within, you know, uh, you know, two to $5 range amongst the others. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ma'am?
Yes.
And I don't know if this is for Mr. Roundtree or superintendent wants to answer. But I know people will ask, why don't you Sharp Field? We own it. Could you just kind of, I know this is just off the top of your head, but maybe capacity, if available, and then just the costs involved? Because I think people don't understand that there's actual, like, that may, would exceed the cost of renting Springfield, so.
Yeah. So we, we have utilized Sharp Stadium in the past. And the expense runs roughly around $30,000. And, and the expense covers things such as, we don't have the correct sound equipment out there. So we have to rent the sound equipment. Of course, we don't have the chairs for the fields. We have to do that. Plus, we have to employ people to put all of those things out. And, and then we have to employ security because once it's out there, someone has to monitor it. It, it, in the past, it had to be set up the day, like Thursday. So we had to have somebody around the clock, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And then, of course, Saturday night so that it could be cleaned up on Sunday. There were costs for the stage, I mean, just a laundry list of costs. But in addition to that, we had people who became ill outside due to the temperature. We, so we had to have EMTs and resource officers. We had to hire custodial staff. And I'm probably leaving some small pieces here and there out. But overall, it is not zero cost to use our, our stadium. The seating capacity, I want to say, is 2,000 on one side and three on the other, which is.
Only use one side really.
You really only use one side. So we allowed people to sit on the other side, on the, the bleachers. But overall, it's just a really, it's, it's very hot because the sun rises and sets there. So irrespective of the time, in the morning, it's extremely hot. In the evening, it's extremely hot. And, and we had several emergencies that had to be managed during the course of graduation, so.
So, and I'll just add, too, if, if weather were an issue.
Indeed.
We wouldn't be able to move all of those people to another location.
Right.
We would have to have multiple rain dates and.
Yes. And we, we had contingency plans in place and, and we had to set up, we, we had to set up the school locations and then hire someone to be at the school. And then we would have, like, a magic ticket. And that magic ticket got into the venue, the school's gym, which was the venue, the alternative location. And that ticket got two people in, and that was it. So if you didn't have tickets, then you were unable to participate at all. And so I think overall, the better, best option for us is, is to use facilities that are, that are reasonable in their pricing, that are kind of close to where we, where we reside and are, are indoors with temperature control, with facilities, with restrooms, and all of, all of those different pieces.
And can I add something? Was that 2012 or 2013, you guys? It was like.
It was 2012.
12, yeah.
Okay. So the, the thing I want to add, when you were saying people were getting sick and stuff, most of the people that were getting sick were elderly people. And actually, we have to be at graduation early. So Abigail, Eddie, and myself were on the board at that time. And we literally pulled up to a lot of ambulances out there. It was ton. I, I, like, more than three. And so that's not good for them. So I just want to say that because that's the population. I'm sure grandmother, great-grandmother, grandfather, great-grandfather would like to see their graduate, graduate, you know, and stuff. And so that's not a good look. And to go with what Ms. Fury said about the sun, it was not then till we discovered, I think, that the sun rises and set in the end zone. So, on both sides. So therefore, there is no shade. And so you are, you got your graduates out there. They have on their cap and gown. And even if they had shorts on, we literally saw kids walking across the stage, drenching wet.
Slipping.
Yes.
It was kind of dangerous.
Because it was, yeah, it became a hazard. They were just pouring wet. So we did not realize that the sun rose and set in the end zones until then, so.
And that, that's a good point, too, that, that staging comes and it has that black tar kind of stuff on it. And people were sliding all over the place, walking up and down. It was just really unbearable and not necessary if we can, especially at the cost. If it was zero, you know, maybe that would be something we could think about, but it's not zero. And.
Well, I appreciate you going through it. I just know that's a recurring question every year. Why don't we do it this way? So I just appreciate you going through that.
And people in neighboring county, because people will say, well, they do it, you know, in a neighboring county. So I have been at a graduation before in a neighboring county outside, actually, two of their stadiums, and the sun was behind me. And that is not the case in our situation. So I don't know who built the stadium and when they built it.
They weren't thinking about graduation.
But they were not thinking about where the sun rises and sets, so.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Manager, if you will, I would like to acknowledge Dr. Barr and his operations staff for helping with the research of the other institutions. They did that. So I just want to give credit where credit is due for their assistance in helping to prepare that part of the presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. And one last thing, I said I think that was going to be the last thing. I just want to be very transparent with the community because I don't want anybody saying anything. Going back to you were talking about for it to be equitable to our graduates. In the past years, would you please tell us how those tickets have been? Because they're, they haven't been close in past years.
Exactly.
I can if you.
Okay.
So, so both Al Covey and Eastside, because their graduating classes were, are smaller than Newton, they've been able to hand out many more tickets, like, in the neighborhood between five and seven tickets at each of Al Covey and Eastside. And unfortunately, Newton High School, last year, they, they were only able to have four tickets, period. And so this change in location brings up Newton High School's allocated tickets to be about seven, which would match, or come close to. They're still not exactly the same, but closer than the others having six or seven tickets and Newton having four.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
I can make a comment. I was outside in the stadium, getting a full blast of the sun. And I made a promise to myself that I won't attend another graduation in, on the football field. And then, it's just brutal. There's no need to put us through that, that painful, long, hot period of time. It's humane, anyway.
But we can say we gave the public what they wanted because the public kept wanting an outside graduation for many years. So we are able to say that we listened to the public and we gave them what they want. And from there, we discovered the flaws with it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Item E.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share student performance data as measured by the Iowa this evening. This presentation will provide performance in terms of student growth for the 2018-19 academic year. For each student group, the test and composite results of the current test administration, which in this case is spring 2019, or compared to a previous test administration, fall 2018, to determine if students met the estimated rate of growth. We utilize this data to monitor growth, identify strengths and opportunities for improvement, implement RTI, and evaluate programs. Over the last few months, I have worked with schools and teachers to examine multiple data sources, Georgia Milestones, Iowa, GCA assesslets. And this triangulation of data provides us with a better understanding of strengths and opportunities for improvement. Grade one. In grade one, 66% of students met or exceeded estimated growth in reading. Due to the acquisition of knowledge that must take place for students at this age, estimated growth percentages for math are not provided. Math questions at this age emphasize concepts, problem solving, and operations. Response choices are pictural and numeral. And in the spring, questions measure the understanding and ability to apply concepts in the areas of number properties and operations, geometry, measurement, and number sentences. Response choices differ from those presented during the prior administration. And some questions at this level require the student to solve brief word problems. In grade two, 85% of students met or exceeded estimated growth in English Language Arts, and 90% met or exceeded estimated growth in math. In grade three, 80% of students met or exceeded estimated growth in ELA, and 76% met or exceeded estimated growth in math. In grade four, 76% of students met or exceeded estimated growth in ELA, and 74% met or exceeded estimated growth in math. In grade five, 81% of students met or exceeded estimated growth in ELA, and 81% met or exceeded estimated growth in math. In grade six, 72% of students met or exceeded estimated growth in ELA, and 65% met or exceeded growth in math. In grade seven, 72% of students met or exceeded estimated growth in ELA, and 67% met or exceeded estimated growth in math. In grade eight, 74% of students met or exceeded estimated growth in ELA, and 71% met or exceeded estimated growth in math. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan. Any questions for Dr. Jordan?
I have one. Can we get a copy of that?
Yes, ma'am.
hesitation? I'd just like to have the numbers.
Sure. Yes.
Also, just curious about the, the number included in the chart versus the number tested. What's the difference in that number four?
In order to generate the estimated growth, the student must have the fall administration of the Iowa along with the spring administration. So you can see, there's a little bit of variance there. But capturing the majority of the population that we do in all of these charts, you are able to generalize to the entire population in terms of estimated growth.
So, so a child may not have been here for the fall administration, but was for the spring. So since they don't have the beginning of the year, then you can't, you can't compare them.
There are almost 200 students in each chart. We have 200 transient students in each grade?
Yes. Indeed. That, that's one of our, one of our challenges, that students throughout our system move very, at a regular rate. And we know that when that number exceeds 30% at a school, it negatively impacts our students, learning both the child who moves and then those kids who are seated in the classroom. So that's why our work in, in the area of poverty is really important because many of our, our families are, are moving around the community. And it's, it's connected to the impacts of poverty, not in every case, but in many. And so, yeah, the, when you look at our data across those numbers, the, and, and interestingly enough, it's, it's come down a little bit. But there are schools where that churn is, is pretty significant.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
I'm coming. I hope I'm reading this correctly. And the number does not meet estimated growth, increased as the grade level got higher. Is that, did I read that correctly?
Well, I did. When I was gathering this data and reviewing this and analyzing everything, you do see a slight drop. And some of that, again, is attributed to various factors. One factor that we've really been examining has been the starting point of students upon entry into school. And so whether or not those students come with pre-K, a background from a pre-K institution, there, there are so many variables and so many factors for us to examine. But again, the changes that we see can be attributed to the starting point of students.
Thank you.
I have a question. When you talk about that, because you said one thing that you thought about was the pre-K. And so for me, outside looking in, when I look at it, I look at it from a different perspective and a different lens. Whereas, like, grades one through five, it seems like the charts were pretty much even in both English and math. And those are grades where they have the same teacher, with the exception of four and five, where they're doing class changes. But six through eight, where they have a different teacher for each subject area, there's a clear difference in there. And so, I mean, so.
Yes.
So we're looking at, like, so you guys are looking at the pedagogy strategies and stuff like that within those teachers? Okay.
Very, very great observation there.
And these line up with the state for the most part? Have the flow?
Well, when we, when we examined the growth here, we're actually looking through the lens of the Iowa. And the Iowa has the national norms for us. So the test is so much better in that it respects the student and where they are at a given point in time, much in the way that you go to the pediatrician, take your children to the pediatrician. We're not all at the 25th or 95th percentile in terms of height and weight. And this assessment is far better than what we currently have in the state. It respects where the student starts and then determines the growth that we can expect over a year's time.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Jordan. Okay. Item 11 is old business. This does require action tonight, so we'll take a vote on this one, since this is coming back to us.
I, too, like to give credit where credit is due. Mr. Roundtree drew the plans for this high school, so if there's any questions. Relative to that, I'd be happy to bring him forward to answer those. The recommendation, recommendation this evening, superintendent recommends the contract for the construction of the replacement Eastside High School be awarded to Ray Lynn and Associates Incorporated of Carrollton, Georgia. The contract value is $59 million. The contract value is fifty-nine million, four hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-three dollars. As background and rationale, the solicitation for the contract for the construction of the replacement school was opened November twelfth, two thousand nineteen. This project includes the construction of the building itself and associated requirements such as completing the site rating, the construction of storm drainage, curb and gutter, asphalt paving and concrete walks. It also incorporates creation of sports field and parking lots. Three contractors participated in the solicitation, and the pricing they provided is there for your review. Additionally, as you may recall, we gave you, board members, three weeks to review all the documents relative to the construction of the facility, to give you an opportunity to let us know of any concerns that you may have. Additionally, we provided each, each board member an opportunity to meet with us and provide the architect with feedback. That was in February of two thousand nineteen. In the spring of two thousand nineteen, we publicly presented it. And so we took some suggestions and questions that you had at that time and incorporated that into the site plan, into the overall plan for the construction of the facility. And even prior to that, we spent a one-year developing plans, working with district leaders and school personnel to make sure that the facility met the needs of the students and the community and the faculty that it would serve. So tonight, we're asking you to take action on this item. Hopefully, we've addressed all the concerns that exist. This deals with strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and the funding sources are outlined there for your review. And so that is item A for board action, as you indicated, Madam Chair, this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Barr.
Yes, ma'am.
May I have a motion for item A?
Send it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. The floor is now open for discussion or questions. Anyone have any?
Yes, I have one. I see the cost of construction, but I don't see any cost for architecture services.
Right, the cost tonight, what we're asking the board to take action on tonight is the cost of the construction of the facility. We can get, supply you with some additional information on that if you would like.
Well, we'll take first thing first. You gotta have architecture before you get the building, right? And I wanna know what the cost of the services.
Right, I don't have that.
How it's gonna be paid.
Right, I don't have that exact number in front of me, but I can certainly get that information for you. But what we're asking you to take action on tonight is the construction of the school with the general, with the general contractor.
Any other questions about A, the contract for construction? Okay, having none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? I mean, you say aye? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Three, one. Thank you, Dr. Barr.
Yes, ma'am.
New business, item A.
Good evening. The superintendent recommends the budget for FY twenty be amended to include a one percent, one-time pay adjustment in January for all employees in an approximate amount of one point one million dollars. In addition, the superintendent recommends that the budget for FY twenty be amended to include the hiring of two elementary assistant principals at approximate cost of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Additional, additional budget amendments are below, listed below, and their associated expenses for proximity learning, substitutes, and athletic supplements to cover budget cuts, textbooks adoptions, bond interest, interest payments, and extended learning opportunities. The initial budget process is completed during the spring of each year. During the initial budget process, some items are unknown and estimates are used. A budget review session is held in the fall after final information is received and analyzed. This budget review allows the board to identify areas of need that would have been budgeted during the initial budget process and also allows the board to continue efforts to restore cuts made during the recession. Most of the cuts during the course of the recession had to come from employee salary and benefits, and so it is appropriate to use these funds to begin first restoring salary and benefits to employees. Also, in keeping with our plan for increased student achievement, it is necessary to offer additional curricular and instructional programming and materials. On the budget options, follow this memo and are represented in charts A and B.
Okay, thank you. So we have the recommendation for, we had a special call meeting earlier about this with chart A and chart B. Chart B is the one that's being brought forward. So anybody have any other discussion or questions?
I just wanted, you kinda went quickly through the, the amended increases, the applicable expenses to cover, and you said budget cuts. And I just wanted to make sure you're, you clearly articulate that it's not us that are making budget cuts. This is state budget cuts to our.
There was a.
QBE state grants.
Yes, there is a four percent budget cut to non-QBE state grants handed down by the governor. And so we are asking to cover those cuts with our general fund budget.
Right, so for clarity.
Because the state has cut the QBE state grants, we're having to pick up locally and pay for those cuts, is that correct?
Partially. Not, not QBE state grants, the non-QBE state grants.
I'm sorry, that's for a minute.
Yes.
Non-QBE state grants.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. I think that's important to point out so that it is put out there correctly. Transparency. Any other questions? Feedback? Okay, item B.
Item B is the superintendent recommends the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-one tentative budget calendar. The budget calendar is set to coincide with the adoption of the final budget prior to the adjournment of the final board meeting in June. Once enrollment projections are finalized, schools will receive an allotment that will have projected student enrollments and staffing for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Staffing will be based on maximum class size as approved by the State Board of Education. Guaranteed budgets will be based on per-student dollar amounts as indicated on the attached calendar. The calendar provides time for principals to discuss budgets and receive input from their staff prior to submitting their guaranteed budget. Time is set aside for the board to hold budget work sessions and public hearings as may be needed or required.
Any questions about B? Item C?
In item C, the superintendent recommends the renewal of the contract for the maintenance program provided by Harris School Solutions for next-gen financial software. The program period covers the twenty-twenty calendar year. The total cost is thirty-eight thousand, four hundred seventy-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. Harris School Solutions designs, develops, and builds software and hardware to meet the needs of K through twelve school districts. They were one of the first to offer financial management tools for the K through twelve market and have been in business for over thirty years. Next-gen, the financial software used by the school system is an enterprise resource planning solution that offers a fully integrated suite of fund accounting and, and business management modules. The maintenance program includes technical support troubleshooting and resolution of issues that affect the software or its operations, a customer support program, training information, and all software releases, updates, and enhancements. This cost will be paid for with budgeted FY twenty general funds. The funding source is function twenty-five hundred and object code three hundred.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Item D, Dr. Jordan.
The superintendent recommends the approval of the purchase of Iowa assessments for use in the elementary and middle schools. The assessments will be administered during the month of March, twenty-twenty. The purchase amount is one hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred. Iowa assessments are used in grades one through eight for the purpose of measuring student performance relative to criterion and norm reference standards. This purchase will allow the district to measure student growth as required by Senate Bill three sixty-four and provide college and career readiness benchmarks. Iowa assessments serve as the universal screener and are also used for placement test purposes and gifted identification. These assessments will also provide the district with valid and reliable data to measure instructional effectiveness. Strategic goal area one, student achievement and success. The funding source, function twenty-one hundred, object six-ten.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan. Any questions for Dr. Jordan? Okay, thank you. Item F, Dr. Barr?
Yes, ma'am. In item E, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed per board policy. And those items are included for your review, and that is item E.
Okay, any questions about E? Nobody needed this? Item F?
In item F, the superintendent recommends the band instruments and accessories needed for middle and high schools be purchased from Music and Arts of Frederick, Maryland. The total cost will be seventy-four thousand, six hundred twelve dollars. As rationale, each middle school and high school was allocated funds based on student enrollment for the replacement of band instruments and accessories. The school system will utilize a contract managed by Omea Partners, a national purchasing cooperative, to purchase the band equipment. The schools and costs are reflected there for your review. This deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and the funding source is the FY twenty-twenty capital fund, function one thousand, object six fifteen. That concludes item F for your consideration.
Okay, any questions about F? Okay, thank you. Item G, Mr. Garrett?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
Item twelve, G? Item G, I guess. Requested board action relative to renewal of contract for plumbing services. Superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for plumbing services awarded to Talon Plumbing of Tucker, Georgia, be renewed for an additional contract term. The effective date will be December nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Expiration date will be December eighteenth, twenty twenty. The estimated contract value is two hundred five thousand dollars. The contract was originally awarded in December, on December eighteenth of twenty eighteen. Solicitation process prescribed a turnkey solution for comprehensive plumbing services. It's a very comprehensive scope, which is shown there. The RFP process was chosen because this procurement method allows officials to identify the best value by using weighted criteria price rather than price alone. The vendor has performed satisfactorily and has agreed to continue their service over the current terms and conditions of the contract. The estimated annual value of this contract is two hundred five thousand dollars. The contract will be paid for with budgeted FY twenty general funds, function twenty-six hundred, object four thirty.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions about G? Okay, thank you. Item H, Dr. Warfield?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the approval of Georgia Teacher, Georgia Teacher Academy of Preparation and Pedagogy fees for eligible teachers enrolled in the program provided by Griffin Regional Educational Service Agency. The total expense is forty-one thousand, four hundred dollars. Rationale, Title II A is a federally funded program whereby funds are used primarily for the recruitment, professional learning, and retention of teachers. The purpose of Title II A is to increase academic achievement by improving the effectiveness of teachers, principals, and other school leaders. Georgia Department of Education requires each local educational agency to identify equity intervention supportive of the Title II A grant's purpose. An equity intervention outlined in the district's Title II A Equity Action Plan is to support the retention of effective teachers and effective school leaders. An approved Georgia strategy addressing the identified equity intervention is payment of Georgia TAP fees for qualified candidates. Teacher retention and recruitment continues to be a major emphasis for the school system, especially in the critical needs areas of math, science, foreign language, and special education. The school system works with eligible candidates who possess a minimum of a bachelor's degree but have not completed a traditional preparation program to enroll in the program. This program is not intended to replace regular college teacher education programs. It is instead an alternative option for individuals interested in teaching. Georgia TAP is a classroom-based, is classroom-based and equips teacher candidates with the skills to ensure reasonable expectation of initial success in their classrooms. A hallmark of the program is a supervised induction program that helps candidates move toward the mastery of teaching. This addresses strategic goal area one, student achievement and success. Strategic goal area two, high-quality workforce. The supporting document is included, which is a brochure of the TAP program, and the funding source is FY twenty-twenty Title II A funds, function twenty-two thirteen, object eight, not eighteen, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Warfield on item H?
Of course, you have any numbers on the participation?
The numbers of participants that, these funds will be allocated. We have about twenty-six teachers that are serving in critical needs areas.
Are they presently enrolled, is it?
Presently enrolled in the program.
Thank you much.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Warfield. Item I, Dr. Thomas?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends the professional development services needed for the school system be purchased from the Georgia Center for Assessment of Athens, Georgia. The total cost is sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Rationale, the Georgia Center for Assessment, which is GCA, is a public service organization residing in the University of Georgia's College of Education. The GCA provides a comprehensive suite of assessments, teaching and learning solutions, all customizable to the needs of their clients and supported by academic research. Services include assessment and item development, data analysis, psychometrics, scoring and reporting, and professional learning. Focus will be placed on the Georgia Standards of Excellence in English Language Arts and a model or framework for teaching all four strands in tandem. The training to be purchased includes twenty-six days of professional learning delivered to our thirteen elementary schools. This expenditure here aligns to strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and the funding source is from FY twenty Title I funds, function twenty-two thirteen, object code three hundred. This concludes item I.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Thomas? Thank you. Item J and K, Dr. Bio?
Greetings. The superintendent recommends the Media Center books needed for select schools be purchased from Fallat School Solutions of McHenry, Illinois. The total cost is fifty-six thousand, seven hundred, forty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Fallat School Solutions is a leading provider of books and material, technology, and professional services for the K-12 market. Title Wave and their school library platform is a collection, development, and curriculum support tool that allows schools, administrators, and staff to select from more than twelve million titles in a wide variety of formats. The school system will utilize contract number five-three-one, DAS seventeen, managed by the National Buy Board, a national purchasing cooperative established by the National School Board Association to procure the Media Center books from Fallat, meets strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and is from FY twenty general fund, function twenty-two twenty, object code six-four-two.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions about J? You can move on to K.
All right. Superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract awarded to Manning Enterprises Incorporated for K-12 consultants of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, for E-Rate consulting services renewed for an additional contract period. The effective date of renewal will be December nineteenth, twenty nineteen. The expiration date will be December eighteenth, twenty twenty. Annually, the Technology Department issues solicitations for telecommunications, internet access, and internal connections as part of the E-Rate process. E-Rate is a federal communications program designed to fund affordable access to advanced telecommunications services in libraries and schools down to the classroom level. The focus of the program is on infrastructure, transport, not content or end-user equipment. As E-Rate program is extensive and ever-changing regulatory requirements, it is deemed necessary to enlist the services of a consultant to both ensure compliance and maximize funding. K-12 consultants assist in the development and, and review of E-Rate solicitations as well as assuring all submissions, products, and services received are in compliance with E-Rate rules and regulations. They are, they prepare and file all required forms at every juncture of the multi-stage application, approval, and funding process, maintaining all required records and prepare and submit required yearly audit. Finally, K-12 consultants actively and successfully work to increase both funding requests and the amount of E-Rate funds received. The cost of these services is ten percent of approved funding dispersed to the school system. We meet strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area four, operational and organizational effectiveness. and strategic goal area four, operational and organizational effectiveness. Documents are listed on file, and it's from general fund twenty-two, from, excuse me, FY twenty, general fund twenty-eight-hundred, object three-hundred.
Okay, thank you. Any questions about K?
Just the cost, it's whatever they are able to get us approved. It's, we pay ten percent of whatever.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Item L, Ms. Sanders?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The superintendent recommends approval of personnel items as discussed during executive session.
Okay, item L requires action. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Four, zero. Thank you. Other matters of interest? No one have any? Okay, everybody's quiet tonight then. All right, so again, congrats to you.
Well, thank you.
To our dynamic superintendent.
Thank you.
For a job well done. Your work speaks for itself, so your teamwork speaks for itself, too.
Yes.
We have the pleasure of watching her when she goes off places and seeing how many people really reach out to her. So we are so proud of you.
Thank you.
And grateful for your leadership.
Thank you.
The other, only other matter of interest I have is, Dr. Thomas, your presentation. We're doing twenty-six days of professional learning to the UGA system, right, University of Georgia. Mr. Roundtree, you presented the graduation places, and I believe you have a degree from the University of Georgia.
I have a bachelor of law.
Uh-huh. And they wouldn't even give us a fee to have a graduation there. Now, had we been in Alabama and it would have been Auburn, we would not have had this issue.
They said, they said if you have to ask, then you can't afford it.
Will you bring that to their attention, please? Okay, absolutely. With that being said, I want to break the silence. So with that being said, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Send it.
Moved in second. Meeting adjourned by the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, seven fifty-one PM.
Thank you. See ya. Thank you. Have a good week. Have a good week. Have a good weekend.
A through, I want, I want y'all to know, A through L.